Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see you all here in council chambers at 6:00 P. M. I'm calling the meeting to order. I do believe we have remote electronic attendance today.
I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Elder Person Debbie Murphy at the Committee of the Whole and the City Meeting of September 12, 2003, due to personal illness or disability.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call, please. Elder Person Finch.
Present.
No, you have to say hi. O'Brien.
Orne.
Present.
Nope, this is our roll call. Because she's on mine, yeah, we'll get it. Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Who's next?
Just to be clear, Ms. Elder Person Murphy, that's the roll call vote for not attendance, but for the on your online participation. Does you want to register an aye or a nay?
She does not vote.
Oh, she does not vote. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't vote.
We'll get it together here. We'll get it together. All right. Who's next? Do we get everybody?
Five ayes, no nays.
All right. We will accept your online participation. Thank you for being with us tonight. The first item of business is our oath of office. We're very excited for the appointment of Stephanie Murphy to city clerk. So would you like to do this up here?
That would be easier.
With the flags?
Yeah.
Come on over. All right, so take this one. Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. Aye, Stephanie Murphy.
Aye, Stephanie Murphy.
Having been duly appointed to the position of city clerk.
Having been duly appointed to the position of city clerk.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct.
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of city clerk. Go ahead.
Of the position of city clerk.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, and welcome to the table. Sign that, this one, and that, the one you have. It's a little much, you take a few seconds to do that. Okay. The next item of business is the mayor's appointment of Avery Pearl to the Human Rights Commission for a full two-year term to expire August 31st, 2025. And after that, we have presentations. The first up is 5.1, the 2023 Moline Cove Valley School District and City of Moline Student Internship Program Intern Recognition. Ms. Miller?
Good evening, everyone. Last year, the city and the school district embarked on a collaborative internship program in public works, parks, engineering, and utilities. This year, it was expanded to include executive, H R, I T, finance, and C E D. The program was designed to provide numerous benefits for both the students and the city, with the primary goal to enhance work readiness experiences for the high school students and open up a gateway for them to explore municipal government careers and ultimately expand the applicant pool for future positions within the city. There's three tiers to the process. The first is a formal tour of all of the areas, which exposes the students to the different areas of municipal government. And then, following that, students can apply for a paid internship in the summer after their junior year. Those interested in the public works, parks, engineering, and utilities do a six-week internship, and they rotate through different areas. And then, those in the administrative internship focus intensely in one area. All the students gain practical, hands-on experience and insight into the specific roles and responsibilities within municipal government. Tier three is the final tier, and it gives students the opportunity to participate in an extended internship in the summer following their senior year and take a deeper dive into their chosen functional area. So we had two students from last year who returned for tier three this year and 13 students who participated in tier two this year that'll have the opportunity to return next year for tier three. So we're very excited about that. So win-win helps them discover their interests, and it also helps the city to grow its talent pool and contribute to the development and growth of young talent within our area. So I have Teresa Todd, the Work-Based Learning Intermediary, and Chris Moore, principal, here today as well with Dr. Savage from the school district. We're excited to recognize the 15 interns for their participation in the program this year. So I am going to read off all their names, and then I'll pass out their certificates for those who are able to join us today. So we have Blue Beck.
And do you want them to stay up here? Like, are you just reading out their names?
I was going to read all the names, and then she handed out their certificates. I think it's kind of challenging to get in and out right now.
Okay, can we get a picture with their administrators on the steps or something?
Let's have everybody who is here come up, and then I'll read off all the names together.
Oh, yeah. That sounds wonderful. Anybody who's an intern here, come on up.
So we, participating this year, we had Blue Beckwith, Manousha Bahadi, Elizabeth Dalton, Damian Espeito Niels, Samantha Gerstel, Carter Goodwin, Larry Coward, Stella Miller, Marshall Cobb, Bryce Felici, Anki Rajbunji. I'm butchered, sorry. Rajbunji, Asani Ansanda, Colin Sheer, Said Saroye, and Donika Wilson.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Do you all want to come up with for a picture with them? And, well, it's okay.
Nothing. Can I give you a run?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, and congrats. I hope you come back for tier three. All right, have a wonderful evening. All right. Our next item of business is 5.2, our Neighborhood Partnership Committee, September 2023, Neighbor of the Month Awards. I'm going to read out our names and have them come up here after we've cleared out a little. Ms. Whitley, did you have anything to add? All right. Well, our commercial award winner is Touch of Tuscany, Mary Ellen and Carrie Brown, and our residential award winner is Jordan Danielson. Thank you so much for all you've done to beautify our community. So if you want to like to come up, we have certificates for you. You want to hold it for everyone?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Jordan Danielson?
And my fiancee, I both won the ball.
Yeah, wonderful. And that's how it's written here, and thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. If there's a staffersen chief, can you turn the fan on back there? For that fan? Please? Somebody? Oh, wait, it just turned on itself? Oh, you got it. Okay, thank you very much. All right, and our final presentation, 5.3 Avenue of the City's Traffic Study. Mr. Dryer, are you with us, or are you online?
I certainly am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, let me say thanks for the opportunity to present our transportation study findings to you for the Avenue of the City's corridor from 16th Street to the east corporate limits. You may recall, in the spring of 2022, the city secured the services of G W A L T Hamilton, or G H A, as they are known, and they're an engineering and transportation planning and operations consulting firm based out of the Chicagoland area. They conducted an extensive review of the corridor, collected significant amounts of data, reviewed traffic crashes, traffic volumes, pedestrian bicyclist traffic. They observed and subsequently modeled the corridor and developed the recommendations and the results that you have before you tonight. The study looked at the operation of the corridor overall, operational needs, pedestrian needs, potential for capacity changes and reductions throughout the corridor, traffic signal phasing and other signal operational changes, for example, left turn phasing and changes in operations. Tonight, we have Kevin Belgrave from G H A with us, and he will make a quick presentation to you and touch on some of the findings and recommendations and answer any questions that you may have. With that said, Kevin, can you hear me and proceed?
We think we need you to unmute, Kevin.
All right, I am here, and can you hear me now?
Yes.
Very good, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, the mayor and council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to present the Avenue of the City's findings. As Mr. Dryer indicated, we did an extensive evaluation of the corridor. Several of the things that we were tasked with looking at was evaluating whether a road diet was possible, evaluating any potential for adding on-street parking, potential for access control improvements with many access drives along the corridor, pedestrian accommodations, and then, as well as capacity improvements along the corridor. We took traffic counts at all 12 signalized intersections, and one of the things we found is that the existing average daily traffic ranged from 20,000 to almost 26,000 vehicles per day. And so as we ran some analysis based on existing conditions and then modeled it with a road diet with a three-lane section, one lane each direction, we found that the level of service under existing conditions operated most intersections at a level of service C. And when we modeled the road diet, we ended up with level of service Ds and in some cases, as low as a level of service E for some of those intersections along the corridor. Therefore, we do not recommend a road diet for this corridor. Another area was the on-street parking. I know that's a concern with businesses along the corridor and such. And again, with limited right-of-way, in order to do on-street parking, that would impact the through-travel lanes. We would have to take through-travel and to accommodate on-street parking. So again, that was not one of our recommendations. With regards to potential access control, there were some areas along the corridor that we recommended the access control, and that would be if a property was being redeveloped or some existing vacant parcel that may be developed in the future. There were areas that we saw that could be addressed with some access control. Then we move on to pedestrian accommodations. This corridor has sidewalk along both sides of the road, the entire corridor. And as we were going through it, we did notice intersections that were lacking either ADA accommodations, push button, pedestrian push buttons, pedestrian signals, and things like that. So our recommendations do include that for a number of those locations. I can get a little more detail on what some of the recommendations are at each specific intersection. And then, with regards to capacity improvements, there are a number of intersections that are protected only, phasing for the left turns. And we looked at a number of those, and some we believe that can be modified to protected permitted phasings. While others, due to sight lines and some geometric issues, we felt that the protected-only phasing was adequate. But those are some things that the city may be able to investigate further to see if there is opportunity for modifying some of the geometrics and improving more of the capacity at some of those intersections. I guess I can go through kind of each intersection and give you a quick rundown of some of the recommended improvements, if that's something that you're interested in at today's meeting.
Counsel, could you win? Is it any different than what is in the published documents?
No, it's really what's in that published document. So again, wasn't sure how much detail you wanted to go through tonight.
Well, thank you for this. It's very clear. This document is very clear. I would think my counsel would agree. But I think we could use the time to open it up for questions from the counsel. Pat, do you have something?
Okay.
Excuse me, Elder Person O'Brien.
Thank you. The crash reports, is that? I mean, I looked at the crash reports, and it seemed like, I was kind of surprised that there weren't more crashes than there were up there. Is that considered high or low for this volume of traffic? Or, I mean, you do have a high school there with brand-new drivers entering the road.
Right.
Do you think that's a problem for us?
Well, you know, that was something I was looking at, and the data we had was from 2019 through 2022, about two and a half years of data that we got through the Illinois Department of Transportation website on crash information, as well as some supplement documents that we received from the city of Moline. And almost all instances, the corridor, intersections, and corridor segments were rated as low for crash incidents. So with regards to that.
So it is low.
So the data.
Yeah. Pardon?
Go ahead.
So it is low.
I said, yeah, overall, it was, it fell within a low to a medium was. I think one segment that I remember going through was classified as a medium level out of a low, medium, and high-level accident.
Okay. I just have a follow-up question on the traffic signals. And this is just for my own gratification when I'm cussing out the traffic light. How many, these lights are set to trigger when a car approaches the intersection? Or, because it says here, "All signal phases clear grading vehicles without delay", and then it goes on to, you know, the different categories. What is that? Is that, does that tell us that we need to add new traffic signals? I mean.
Kevin, Kevin, let me answer that one. We have, we have detection out there, and some of it is quite antiquated. It's literally hockey pucks that are cordoned to the pavement that communicate with the device on the side of the road. Those are failed. So we do have some intersections where we've had problems with detection, where phases, left-turn arrows, for example, were being called when there was no traffic there. So the intersections were not as responsive as we would like them to be. We're in the process of updating them with the new equipment that you authorized, the council authorized us to purchase, and Josh is working on those. We've literally been operating the signal at the high school manually for the past week or so because the detection needs to be updated, and they're working on making those changes this week. So we're going to see new traffic detection there that will improve things, give us more robust operation and the ability to operate like we intend. Right now, we do have some intersections that aren't operating as well as we'd like. It's older equipment that needs to be updated.
Thank you, Mr. Dryer. And please tell your staff thank you for that work at the high school, any of us that drive up there at school release time, whether it's the elementary right there or the high school.
I will do that. I miss them every morning. I'm like, I want to talk to them, but I can't. He's out at the intersection on Avenue of the City, so I will.
I've been talking to him instead for you.
There we go. Thank you.
Do we have other questions for Kevin? Anyone else? Thank you very much for the partnership in providing this information. We'll look forward to our budget recommendations coming next week on a lot of these needs. Thank you so much.
I appreciate the time tonight. Thank you.
Yep. So we move to public comment. I believe we do have some folks here in the room, and then some from email.
Joshua, I can't read last name.
We were just told to sign.
Oh.
We're later on the thing.
Okay, no problem.
But we are happy to find out that it is not us that thinks the lights are like that.
Thank you.
It worked, it's all good.
Thank you.
Not going crazy.
Is it, what happened to Henry? You're going to come speak? I think you're on the list. Am I skipping a name? Chief? Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Henry Weber. I've lived in Moline for 50 years. I have played tennis at Riverside Park for the last 48 years. The tennis courts have so much history. As an avid tennis player, I hope the city will consider putting in new courts. I went to a meeting in the fall of 2021 showing details of Riverside Legacy Project. I realized costs for the new pool went up dramatically. At the time, one sketch showed 10 tennis courts, and another one showed eight tennis courts and two foot-saw courts. I'm wondering, though, what the priority is for the new tennis courts now, as I am hearing about projects at Green Valley Park and under the old 74 Bridge. I hope new tennis courts will be given major consideration, not slid to the bottom of the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Jordan Danielson signed it. I don't know who was on the award line or so.
Yep. Think he's gone now.
Bradley, and I can't read the last name.
Di.
Okay, thank you.
D Y E.
Yep, you have three minutes.
I will take that.
Number one, the Riverside Legacy Project is a great thing. We need to finish it. That's basically what I'm going to tell you. It should take priority. We've done, I think pickleball. Are there any regrets on the pickleball courts?
No.
Going once, going twice. Okay, that's where, that's where I'm at with this. We, and Eric has done a great job since he came aboard. He promised to work with us on that. We got, during the pandemic, we got those courts, lights, all set up. Part of the deal, though, will be the tennis court project to be finished. We have a chance. I'm a member of the pickleball club of Quad Cities, which boasts about 700 members, both sides of the river. We have a chance to get the Midwest Tournament in 2025. It's a two-year gig. If we would have received that, it would be 800 to 900 out-of-town players coming for the Quad Cities for three days. Impact, capital I. And we, it's a two-year run, so don't forget that. But part of the deal is you've got to have 24 courts, 24 courts available. And obviously, the pickleball courts, we have eight. Test courts, because of their width, will provide the other 16. They have lights, don't have to do that, just resurfacing. We've done a great job. I know the pool's going to be great. I'm all for it. Grandparents can come to that pool when it gets done. That's what I like about it. First-time grandparents, three months ago. So I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking for, the parking lot looks, it's going to be great. Expansive like we need. Everything's great. Now the test courts are the next pen to fall. If we do that, I think we have Riverside done. And believe me, I'm a baseball guy, a softball guy. I love Green Valley, played there many years. I played in Churchley, I don't age myself. But the bottom line is, we need to go in priority because we have been promised, these test players have been more than patient, and pickleball and tennis have formed a nice, we have a lot of cross players that do both. And we're teaching that at high school now. When I sell the P E department, they're teaching pickleball. They love it. Junior high, we're about to screen new courts on the asphalt behind John Deere. Kids demand it, okay? So pickleball's not going away. Don't think we're going to build all this, and it's going away. It's still there, and it will be there 20, 30 years from now. So that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Randy Nelson.
This is Chris. Hey, how's it going?
Can you?
I just started this council meeting, and it's not going very quickly, so I'll just have to see when I get down here.
Chris, you're going to mute yourself?
Hopefully, he's all.
Please mute yourself, Chris. Thank you. But we are happy to hear you, Randy.
I'm Randy Nelson. I'm a lifelong, I've lived in Moline all my life. I'm 70 years old. I see on the agenda here that Eric's going to talk about Riverside Park and stuff, so I, maybe I'm out of line here. But I just would like to point out, if you have citizens that want to play in the evening, after work, Moline, Moline High School has closed their, has locked their courts up to prevent vandalism. So the Riverside Courts are in bad shape, and they need to be fixed, and they fixed right. And maybe we wouldn't come and bug you if it probably be 10 years before we'd come back, if you could do that. I think that's all I have to say. Without hearing what Eric's going to say, I don't think I'd want to shoot my mouth off before I hear what the man's going to say.
It's all right. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Any further public comment? All right. So would you like to read one from online submission? All right. Hello, my name is Jonathan Marler. I am the owner of Keep Pushing Skate Shop located here in downtown Moline. A quick little background of myself for those who may not know me. I have been skateboarding for over 20 years now in the country and outside of it as well. My family was military, which meant we moved around quite a bit. For some change like that can be hard, but for me, it was great. For me, I could make new friends and skate new things. Anytime we moved somewhere, all I had to do was find out where the nearest skate park was, and I knew I had friends, no matter where I went. Skateboarding is one of the greatest gifts I've received in my life, and I know from, I knew from a young age that I had to have a career in skateboarding. I knew from a young age that I had to have a career in skateboarding. I made this dream a reality on June 4th, 2021, and in my short time being open, I have sold over 1,700 boards. The need for a skate park in our area is beneficial in many ways. Yes, a skate park would benefit me in many ways, but I believe to run a successful business, I must think of others. If we had a skate park here in Moline, it would benefit every business in our downtown. Need some snacks or drinks? You can go to the central store. Hungry? We have Analog, Bent River, Lemongrass, and VIPs, just to name a few. Want something sweet or some ice cream? Lagomashinos is available as well. Des Moines has the biggest skate park in the United States at the moment, and their local skate shop, Subsect, is drawing in some big things in skateboarding. Due tour, Olympic prequalifications, et cetera. Cedar Rapids just had a park built and finished, and their local shop, Edge's Skate, is hosting events at their new park as well. Clinton had a park built, and I have been fortunate to receive business from them since the park opening. If Moline builds a park, we have now created a circuit here in the Midwest for touring pros and other events taking place, which now means we have people traveling in and staying in hotels to be a part of these events. Skateboarding is officially an Olympic sport, yet it is illegal for us to do it in the streets. We have a lot of teenage skaters in our area who sometimes are unable to make their way to Davenport or even these new parks popping up around us, so they resort to skating in the streets. We skateboarders sometimes get stereotyped as rebellious, destructive, and careless, but I can tell you, that's far from the truth. In my short time of being a business owner, I've made it my duty to try and take care of my community. I have been doing a program where if students work hard in school, they can receive a discount in the shop for their hard work. Last year, we were able to give out 30 custom boards to beginners. The best part on how we were able to do this is because of our wonderful community donating money anonymously to the shop to get kids on skateboards. People are spending hundreds of dollars on people they do not know. This goes to show how great this sport is. Skateboarding does not discriminate. We all come from different backgrounds, some good and others not so much, but we do not judge. We all have this in common. A skate park for me growing up was a second home. It was a place I could escape to for anything in life, no matter if I was having an amazing day or a really hard day. The skate park was always here for me. The pros heavily outweigh the cons if this is something we need. I thank you for your time and ask you to please give this a chance. This is a huge opportunity for our youth, our business, and our area. Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Nope. Okay. With that finished, we move to number seven. Questions are on agenda. I have a couple reminders for us. One, I need to announce that the executive session minutes for August 22nd, 2023 were edited after they were posted to add the following names present. Elder Person Matt Timian and Assistant Administrator Barry Dykkaizen, relatively minor. And then I said last time I needed to remember that, and so this is a reminder for myself and for all of us, that Section 2-2212, limitation on speaking upon questions. No member of the City Council shall speak more than twice on the same general question on the council agenda, so not the cow, the council agenda. No more than once on a previous question except by leave of the chair. No person in the gallery shall speak on a subject more than once except by leave of the chair. This shall not restrict or limit a member from making motions as outlined in the chapter. Just a reminder. And then we do have a few more guests related to some of the cow agenda items. I'm going to see how things are going time-wise, and I might ask your permission to move a few items up. Do I need to make a, have them make formal motions to do that? Yeah. Okay, at the time, we'd be suspend the rules and move the, or the items forward. Okay, thank you so much. So with that being said, any questions from the council? Okay. We move to item 8.1, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Hera Property Registry LLC to provide vacant and foreclosure property registration services in the city of Moline. Does that kind of?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution provides the city a tool to track and register vacant foreclosed properties within the city. It is consistent with the strategic goal 2.1F entitled Enhanced Vacant Property Registration Program. This is a tool that Administrator B. Test introduced to staff, and we have spent some time working with the representatives at Hera, one of which may be on joining us remotely. No, no, okay. So some of the goals of this software are to identify abandoned properties, prevent blight, increase our housing supply, encourage affordable housing development, and generate revenue to the city. I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have staff here available too to answer questions.
Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Motion by Elder Person Finch, is her second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person O'Brien. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt.
What is the, what is the fee currently being charged for registration on the registry?
Is it $250?
The initial fee now is $150.
Maybe Amy can come to that.
Six months, it goes to $100, as long as the property remains vacant. And so the stack at six months, it goes to $250, other six months, $350, et cetera, until it's $100.
Okay. Ms. Castro.
Is it just identifying like single-family homes, or would it also do commercial properties that could be zoned also?
Do you want to come to the, to the microphone sets on record? Thank you, Ms. Saunders. All right, so it does include commercial?
Yes, it includes commercial properties. And again, the fees, initial fee is $150. It graduates every six months, another $100. So your second, at six months, it'd be $250, another six months, $350, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the council? I'd say this is very much in line with our stated goal of spending good focus energy and resources on housing issues. Yes.
Yeah, and I think making this program, giving the opportunity to have that focus from that, the vendor being dedicated to it, allowing our staff to focus on the other issues we're going to be adding as we go down licensure and all those other pieces. It just makes a lot of sense, and it's not going to be a hit to us. Well, it is a hit to us, but not in a, it's not adding a cost to what we're doing. So I'm very happy to see this going forward.
Ms. Mr. Macias.
Quick question. When they do the first analysis, do they provide us, is that a list that can also be shared with us to see about how many we have?
Yes. So there's going to be a registry and then there would be a working list. So the registry is generally what's shared. The working list is kind of, we're not sure, but there are certain things that make you think, ah, this might be vacant, like there's been no water usage, or water's been shut off, or it's in foreclosure, or a number of different things that Brad looks at. Brad Hallman's here tonight, Neighborhood Improvement Officer. He also looks at those things to determine whether it should go on the list or not, and then I would keep the list. That's how it's currently done.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Ms. Murphy, I didn't want to miss you by failing to check. Did you have your hand raised at all?
No.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing further from the council, roll call please, and that's an aye or a nay for this item. Thank you. Elder Person Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you so much. We move to 8.2, a resolution declaring the property at 131626 Street and 133026 Street Moline as surplus and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement for sale of real estate and do all things necessary to convey the city-owned property at 131626 Street and 133026 Street Moline to Landeros and Sons Construction, Inc. Ms., you or Ms. Saunders?
Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, okay. So these two properties were acquired by the city as a result of a deal with foreclosure due to a munisance judgment that of, in the amount of $50,080 with the costs, that was due to a lot of property maintenance code violations that Brad Hallman had cited them for. The 1330 property is an old church building that ceased to be a church because there's no one there. We had a hard time finding people that belonged to the church, trustees, et cetera along the way. And then 1316 is the parsonage to the church, which I understand used to be a church at one time called Gordon Something or Other Church. We are looking to declare this property as surplus. We had an RFP that was issued on July 11th. We opened those on July 26th. There were two submissions, and the submission most advantageous to the city is one from Landeros and Sons Construction in the amount of $27,000. And the buyer has agreed to purchase this for that $27,000 and compete the, complete the repair and restoration of those buildings by February 28th, 2026, with a possible extension of three months to May 31st, 2026, because there are two properties on that parcel. Actually, it's two parcels and one property legal description. So we're looking at approval from the council to accept this proposal so that these previously or currently blighted properties can be fixed up, added back to the tax rolls, and they will both, what's proposed is that they're both going to be single-family residences. I'm asking for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
It was a trio of you. That was motion by Elder Person O'Brien, seconded by Elder Person Macias. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt.
The, the 1330 property, the church, when would that switch back over to being on the property tax rolls then? Like, is that when it, because this is going to need to be rezoned, or that was the one part that just wasn't laid out on the timeline that I saw?
So that will be immediately upon possession. So from the closing date forward, the buyer is responsible for the property taxes.
But that one has the note that that is, it's exempt because it's a church.
Exactly.
So at what point does it, does its exemption lapse? Is that on sale?
On sale, yeah.
Thank you. I know Mr. Timian's unavailable to be with us this evening, and this is in his ward, but I can report to council that when he held a board meeting, I believe, last, not summer of '23, but '22, there were plenty of residents who were interested in what was going to happen with that, that property. So I'm very, very thankful for all the hard work by the staff, all departments involved to get this property to this point, and the fact that the timeline seems manageable according to you all for, for turning this into something viable for people to live in. I'm excited about that. Thank you. Is there anything further? Hearing none. Roll call please. Elder Person Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. That motion passes. Thank you. Thank you so much. 8.3 is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the fiscal year 2023 Port Security Grant Program Award for the amount of $21,541, and acknowledging that the terms of the agreement articles obligating document fiscal year 2023 Port Security Grant Program Notice of Funding Opportunity and FEMA Preparedness Grants Manual are incorporated into the terms of the grant award received on behalf of the Department of Homeland Security and authorizing the police business analyst to digitally accept said award and its terms, and authorizing the police department's staff to do all things necessary to administer said grant. Chief.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the second year that we have been awarded a grant from FEMA for the Port Security Grant Program. Annually, the federal government sets aside $100 million to provide funding to state, local, and private sector partners to help protect critical port infrastructure from terrorism, enhance maritime down, maritime awareness, improve port-wide maritime security risk management, and maintain or reestablish maritime security mitigation pro, protocols that support port recovery and resiliency capabilities. So the port that we are on, the Mississippi River, provides a lot of opportunity for both good and bad transportation. So we, in the last two years, have applied for FEMA grants to improve our operations, and this year, we applied for $21,541 to purchase 12 headsets for our tactical team and two ballistic shields, which were a part of this award, and so granted if you accept.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Elder Person Schmidt, seconded by Elder Person Castro. Discussion. Thank you for going after grant opportunities, Chief, you and your staff. It's very helpful. Ms. Murphy, I don't see your hand. So if there's nothing further, roll call please. Elder Person Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. That motion passes. And this next item, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, it is, it is also on the regular council agenda because of deadlines.
Yeah, I apologize. I should have mentioned that. The previous FEMA grant and this next one, I both did ask for consideration. As you know, we came into an odd calendar where we had two weeks off and then a roundtable next week, and with the grant deadlines, we kind of were kind of up against a little bit of a deadline.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this 8.4 is a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept the Operation Underground Railroad, O U R, Global Rescue and Recovery Support Mutual Agreement for the receipt of contributions, Mutual Agreement Document, MED, covering, governing contributions from O U R to the Moline Police Department for the acquisition of an electronic storage detection, E S D K9, and authorizing the chief of police to submit the electronic storage detection, E S D K9, award application to Jordan Detection K9, setting forth the terms of participation in the not-for-profit grant program and acceptance of an E S D K9.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Moline Police Department has maintained a task force for about 15 years with the Illinois Crimes Against Children and the United States Secret Service to investigate crimes against children and similar crimes, and most of those involve digital evidence. Operation Underground Railroad has been financing and funding programs to add electronic storage detection K9 since about 2014, when a dog trained to detect those devices was instrumental in the raid of subway spokesman Jared Fogel's home, where it located a vital piece of evidence. We are looking to obtain a labrador retriever that can detect the chemical compound triphenylphosphazine oxide, T T P O, that is the flame-retardant chemical that is used in all electronic storage materials such as cell phones, USB drives, flash drives, SIM cards, that contain digital evidence in these types of cases. There are two current dogs in the state of Illinois, one in Lake County and one at Southern Illinois University Edwardsville. The other dog in the middle of Illinois died, and so they're looking to add another dog, and they approached our task force members that they would donate this dog to the Moline Police Department to continue to our, do a lot of our good work in the forensic investigations in these terrible crimes against children and human trafficking. So I'd ask you to accept the grant, and we'll get that going. The handler would spend two weeks in Indianapolis. The total program is somewhere between $20,000, $25,000. It'd be de minimis cost to the police department. We'd have a little bit of overtime that this goes along with having a K9 program, but we'd add this dog to our already skilled handlers and our great investigation team. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to continue to support the community. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Mr. Schmidt.
Chief, with taking on this dog, would that then be our responsibility to participate in more regional investigations as well, or how would that work? Because you talked about the distance and...
Yeah. So we have complete control over the deployment of the dog if our resources allow it. We're already on both a federal and a state task force, the US Secret Service Task Force, as well as the Illinois Crimes Against Children Task Force. So our detectives already do some regional investigations, primarily if the tip comes in, has some sort of connection to our area, we often do those. So, you know, we can deny it if we don't have the resources available, or, you know, if our detective's available, we certainly try to support another entity. We have mutual aid agreements for probably a good 40, 45-mile radius of Quad Cities.
Thank you. And that's radius, so we're talking about sharing with Iowa, just as, when I saw this, I thought, oh, this is nice that we can sort of balance the scales when they're sharing their NIBIN system.
Yeah, certainly, certainly. The dog, the dog smells the chemical in Illinois as well as Iowa, so, you know, we can, we can look to assist anybody in the vice city region.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Anything further? Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Who's the dog that homewalks? The handler? Yeah, so we have two detectives that are already assigned to these investigations, and Dave Callaway, who is already assigned to that unit, is, he actually is the one that did the research and cultivated the grant funding, so he's going to be assigned to that.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for providing that opportunity for that particular staff member as well.
Yep.
That's wonderful. Okay, there's nothing further? All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, yes. Roll call please. Elder Person Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Okay. We move to item 8.5, a resolution approving the special event application for the Moline High School Homecoming Parade scheduled for Friday, October 13th, 2023, that is sponsored by the Moline High School and closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic. Mr. Dykkaizen?
Thank you, Your Honor. The parade will require the temporary closure of 36th Street from Moline High School to Avenue of the Cities, and Avenue of the Cities from 36th Street to 27th Street between the hours of 1:30 PM and 3:00 PM, and is the route that has been tradition here for the parade.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person O'Brien, seconded by Elder Person Finch. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call please. Elder Person Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Right, that motion passes. 8.6, a resolution approving the special event application for the Walk to Imaeus event scheduled for Saturday, October 7th, 2023, that is sponsored by the Diocese of Peoria and closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic. Dykkaizen?
Your Honor, this walk requires the temporary partial closure and use of 17th Avenue, 10th Street, 12th Street, River Drive, and I-74 bridge walking path from 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person Finch, seconded by Elder Person O'Brien. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call please. Elder Person Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias? Six ayes, no nays. Right, that motion passes. We move to eight point seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a memorandum of understanding by and between Rock Island County Metropolitan Mass Transit District, MetroLink, and the city of Moline, Illinois, to facilitate the creation and operation of electric vehicle charging networks. Mr. Deckhagen.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city and MetroLink intend to join in achieving a mutual objective in expanding the EV charging network through additional installations, all toward the furtherance of helping the city attract progressive business, new residents, save fossil fuels, and achieve job growth. The MOU will provide the cornerstone and structure for any and all future contracts, including intergovernmental agreements being considered by the city and MetroLink. And, Your Honor, there are representatives of MetroLink here tonight if there are any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, motion by Elder Person Schmidt, seconded by Elder Person Finch. Discussion. Yes, Ms. Castro.
I just wanted to let everyone know that I, my son works at MetroLink, but I have been advised by council that there is no conflict of interest because he is not benefiting and I would not be benefiting, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you very much. Is there anything representatives want to add for us today? You come to the podium. Could you maybe speak to the multiple government units that are involved?
Yes, currently, our partners include the city of Rock Island, East Moline, and Rock Island County. This agreement has been approved already by the city of Rock Island and by East Moline. Next Tuesday, we're on the agenda with the Rock Island County. There may be additional partners at some point. But MetroLink is putting forward, they have already received a grant from the state of Illinois for electrical vehicle charging totaling $600,000, which they intend to put forward as a match towards any other future grants for this collective effort.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
I guess I, how does, I mean, if somebody's driving from New York to L.A. and they see our sign, which is actually placed on the ramp when you're getting, leaving Moline, I don't know what the, we probably replace that sign.
That's an I dot issue.
That's an I dot. Where are they? When somebody pulls off, they pull in and they, they charge a vehicle. How long does that take?
So what we are looking for, what our focuses are DC fast chargers. There's multiple levels of charger, level one, two, and three, which is a DC fast charger. Level one is essentially plugging your car into your wall outlet. Takes forever to charge your car. That's really great if you own an electric vehicle, if you're parking your garage at night, after work, and you're just going to and from work during the day. Level two is still slow. Can sometimes take four to eight hours to charge your car completely. The focus of MetroLink and our partner communities is to add DC fast chargers to our downtown communities because they can charge your car to 80 to 100% in less than an hour. We are not looking for this to be something that the community that they are placing is using, although certainly welcome for anybody in the Quad Cities to use them. The draw is that we are at the nexus of I-74, I-80, I-280. We are between Chicago, Des Moines, Minneapolis, St. Louis. People are buying electric vehicles and they need to stop to charge them as they're driving from New York to L.A. And there are hardly any of these locations along the way to stop at. The Illinois Quad Cities has two locations with a DC fast charger right now, and they are both at car dealerships. No one wants to stop and charge their car at a car dealership. We want them to stop in our downtowns. Downtown Moline has so much to offer. Downtown East Moline, downtown Rock Island, all of you are doing so much right now to build up our communities, and we see this as a great economic draw to get people from outside of our areas to stop here. Have lunch while you're charging your car. Stop at one of your shops while you're having a car. You see our community, and then you might want to come back at another time and stay here longer.
Thank you, Ms. Castro.
Is there a fee for them to use the charger?
Yes, there will be a fee. It's expensive. DC fast chargers are, require an upgrade to the electrical grid, which will require us to work with Mid-American. It will require all of our partner cities to help us out with this. We have a great relationship with them already, as MetroLink has $30 million already invested in battery electric charging equipment and buses in our communities. We are investing around $2 million in center station on remodeling right now, 2.5 remodeling now, and then an additional $2 million within the next couple of years on electric infrastructure for our buses. So we are seeing in that process that it will take huge upgrades to our system, new transformers, pulling power from someplace else to bring it to the locations that we're looking at. So each location with a DC fast charger, depending on how far the power is away, the amount of work we're going to have to do is going to be between $150,000 and $200,000 estimated. Could be more, could be less. It just depends. But we think that it's a real economic opportunity for our entire Illinois Quad Cities. And this isn't even something you can find on the Iowa side either, so people are going to want to stop here instead of Iowa.
These upgrades at bus charging stations provide an opportunity for these other vehicle charging stations. And in an economy of scale, if we want to build that infrastructure, additionally, we have ones built for buses, we can tap on.
And so the, the fees that are paid to it, they, that money then is profit from MetroLink?
Eventually, hopefully, but we don't know. There's going to be a lot of upgrade for maintenance for these. We are investing in training programs. That's part of the requirement of the CFI grant that we applied for. We want our electrical unions to be able to work on electric vehicle chargers. That is the future, so we are looking at adding in training programs for that. And then hopefully, as we get more and more of these, it's going to be a full-time thing. There will be somebody on staff that is going to be have to maintaining these, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from the council? Okay, hearing none. Roll call please. Elder Person Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. All right, that motion passes. Thank you. We move to eight point eight, a resolution approving a grant agreement with Project Now Affordable Housing LLC for the administration of the Level Up Program. So I turn to myself and Reverend Ford and Elder Person Macias to give a little introduction to this before it comes to the floor. Normally, you see a staff or mayor recommendation. You've seen that when we talked about ARPA dollars for childcare. My, that got left off in multiple drafts of things, but the mayor recommendation is to approve this. And the fiscal impact that you also normally see on the explanation page would be the 200,000 out of cannabis tax revenue to put toward basically building a stable foundation for particular parts of our community, for residents, rather than continuing to pour money into buckets that constantly need to be refilled through other programs. So this is an economic opportunity program for residents that meet certain requirements. And just a little background, this, I came up with a skeletal idea for this after going to mayor's conference. I spoke with Reverend Ford about it. We had good conversation. And then several older persons were interested in the idea. This was about a year ago. And so I turned to the form that I have had for multiple programs, our working group form, and I turned it over to Elder Person Macias and Elder Person Timian and our staff, KJ Whitley, who, who worked with Reverend Ford over the better part of this last year to, to help put the program together, to consider a lot of the issues related to these kinds of programs. And so what you see before you is a program that they will, Project Now would administer, which reduces the staff time on our end, but helps make a difference in the lives of many in our community. And I'm going to turn it over to Reverend Ford, actually, to share a little bit more about how you have seen this kind of program work or how you see this particular program working with your partnership.
Let me start very quickly by saying thank you, Your Honor, and to the council. And I must say thank you to the staff that worked so hard alongside of us, charting the pathway forward for this innovative reality. I have the privilege of working alongside so many for uplift initiatives. And I think this is perhaps one of the most innovative ones I've seen locally by, by and far, any other thing that I've had a chance to put my hands to and work alongside. Also want to thank our staff, Ron Lund, who is the director of our community services, to making sure we had state provision where necessary for partnership. And I'll tell you why that is so important. Our mission is very simple, is to eliminate the causes of poverty while also alleviating the negative conditions that poverty creates for us all. What affects one directly affects all of us indirectly. And I champion the idea that Robert Engelsoll said, "We rise by lifting others." Our true work really starts with stabilizing an individual out of crisis. None of this really makes sense unless we can come to the bare reality that poverty, the tipping point of poverty destabilizes individuals and families. And so the first thing is to deal with the crisis at hand, and I'll tell you how this does that. The second one is essentially to have the stabilization. Getting the floor underneath a person or family is so important. When a family or an individual is unhoused, or the car just broke down, they have to get to work. If they miss a day at work, they can be terminated. Their mind is on nothing else but that. The first goal is surviving, and once you get to a point where you can survive, then they can take a deep breath and where you can stabilize the household or an individual, where you can start talking about education, you can start talking about a different type of job for you, a scale-up initiative that allows you to be certified. The third phase is really access to opportunity. And you can start talking about now, how do you take care of your mental health and your physical health? Because you've been letting that go because of the survival mode you have been in for the last year or two years. And the fourth phase is actually the transition phase, where we help move people up and out. Our agency really does really good work with serving people in poverty, but our best work is moving people out of it. Our goal is to try to find something else for those talented, capable, and competent individuals that are staff members to do. We want to see the numbers in poverty go down. We want to see more people stabilized. We want poverty to be brief, rare, and non-reoccurring. I'll give you a quick set of numbers and you can kind of think about this. From the age 20 to 35, almost a third of Americans will experience poverty at 150% of the federal poverty level. From the age 55 to, well, by the time they make it to 55, almost 45% of the population would have experienced poverty at 150% of the federal poverty level. And by the time individuals make it to be 75, almost two-thirds of Americans would have experienced poverty at 150% of the federal poverty level. For those that don't know, for an individual, poverty level is 14,580. For a family of fours, 30,000. There's a whole lot of gaps there, and you can see how easy a person can triple, run into triple crisis time and time again. I want to lift up one individual that's actually a Moline resident and show you how this program works or can work because we get a chance to layer and also level up, no pun intended with the word. Angel, we'll, we'll go with her first name. Angel actually came to us when she was a homeless teenager. She was working in sofa surfing, had nowhere to really call home, going from house to house. We stabilized her with the teenage residency that we had. We moved her into one of our adult residencies where we could cap the rent to no more than one-third of what she was making. At the time, we brought her into adult living quarters. She did not have a driver's license. She did not have an education besides the high school. She did not have a car, but she was still going to work and trying to manage life. We took her out of crisis, worked with her through the stabilization, then we started talking about where else can you go? With the help of our case managers and her sheer determination, she not only completed the next level of education, she went on to obtain her LPN. She's working on now her BSN. She has a car. She has a driver's license. And the only time she comes to us is when the weight gets so hard that she can no longer bear it and to keep from falling, she asks for help. We see ourselves now in the role of spotters. I crossfit and I lift weights regularly. A spotter doesn't do the lifting for you. The spotter just makes sure the weight doesn't crush you and hurt you. That's all we do now. And just in a matter of months, she won't even need that from us. Why? Because we leveled up? We were able to layer our programming on, on top of that. My final thought is we had to work with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunities so that we could layer. So a person in our Head Start program that's a resident could receive one of the three outlined realities of this grant. An individual that maybe in our senior services wouldn't be excluded from receiving this. An individual that comes to us for lie heat on a regular basis because of a certain challenge could still receive these funds. We have all the way from the state, all the way down to where our outreach workers are ready and prepared. We could do this. We can come up with qualitative and quantitative data for the pool of individuals that would go through it. We'll take care of the data and the reporting. We'll make sure it's all in place. Because our goal is to make sure we reduce the level of poverty that happens in this city and to secure those individuals so that they can be not only owners of the responsibility of citizenship, but also help with the work of lifting others as well. I think this without question can and will work.
Thank you, Reverend Ford. So I'll entertain a motion before other commentary.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Elder Person Macias, seconded by Elder Person Schmidt. Discussion. Mr. Macias, did you want to add something from your year-long work on this?
I don't ever like going after you, Reverend Ford. So, but, but yeah, thank you for telling, sharing the story and telling us the great work that you do in the area. I really respect everything you do in our community and for our most vulnerable people. Now, when it comes to this program, our council, we've invested in businesses that are big, small businesses. Now imagine if we do the same for individuals. So that's the way I view this. Most importantly, a lot of the folks that are probably going to be helped, probably have children or will have children. And so by helping parents get ahead, we can also help a lot of the kids in the area. And it's a new generation that'll probably have a better life than, than their parents. Our business community will also benefit because every sector I talk to, healthcare, trucking, construction, finance, the numerous trades, every sector is looking for, for individuals to, to get into their, their arena. So this Level Up Program is helping people attain accreditation or will help people attain accreditation that's needed for our businesses. I, I too came up from humble beginnings, and I know a little bit of help can go a long way. And, you know, these programs can really help, especially the younger people, the kids who will be impacted, just have an exponentially better situation than their parents. So the great thing about this, that it's funded from, you know, just acknowledging that the way, from a tax that really just acknowledges honestly the, the way our nation is moving. So it's not anything that we're taxing our residents for, or it's not being contributed by, by our residents. It's really a, a, a good way to use those funds. So I just think years from now, we're going to look back at this and probably look at it as one of the best programs or the best things that this council has done. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. Yes, Ms. Finch.
I was excited to see that the funds from cannabis were going to be allocated to Project Now. Project Now is an amazing program. And as a single mom going to school and working, I was a recipient of Project Now funding. So a little bit of kindness goes a long way. And I think this will have a positive impact on our community and the residents, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you.
I was thinking, Ms. Finch, you would, you would have probably qualified because of the education component that's, that's listed in the description or the scope of services. Yes, Ms. Castro.
I have a question. There's, I can imagine that you're going to have tons of people apply for the, the program. How are you planning on managing the, the application process and, you know, finding out like who's qualified and kind of dibbing that up?
Well, we have a standard for Head Start.
We use the Head Start standard, and that allows us to look at several factors within the household. Then there is for the monthly payments or investments, I like to use that word, because when we use the word investment, it gives us an understanding that we will all have a return. And that return is to see society come up. Disposable income increases in household, people locally shop. All those things are important to us, and we stabilize families. But as it pertains to the emergency side of the house, that's probably where we'll see the greatest influx of one-time allocations. It is probably close akin to what most of the statistics say, that most families can't afford a $450 emergency at any given month of the year. So part of our responsibility, and I'll ask Ron if he has any additional information concerning the qualifications, we'll use the Head Start overlay. But the emergency side of the house, our case managers are pretty astute in managing those that come in and sitting down and going through our regular routine. And within that 20 minutes, we can kind of at least give them some insight. The great thing, if they come through us, if they don't qualify for this, they perhaps will still qualify for something else that we have going on. And so we're going to throw everything we have at it if they walk through those doors or pick up the phone and call us. Mr. Lund, is there anything that you would like to add?
Yes, and I'm not going to try to fight to get up there.
I actually have to ask you to do that, because we do have a councilperson online. Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So to answer your question, in calendar year '22, just to be perspective, we saw 12,674 individuals. This program is talking 175. This is not going to be an issue for us. On any given day during the course of lihi, we see 200 in a day. So our staff is prepared for this. This is nothing new, and we don't believe that this will be any challenge for us to run.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the sensitivity to the question. And again, I'll reiterate for the council as a whole, if they walk through those doors or call us, we're going to do everything we can to find some way to meet that need, whether they qualify for this or not. And then if we cannot, we'll refer out to our partners and see what else we can do. Our goal is to journey with them all the way to the end.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Very excited to see this program go forward. And I think a lot of the items talked about, looking at stability and looking at how we can prevent people from, you know, a single misfortune can derail an entire opportunity. And these, looking at people who will be looking to attend an educational institution, and that one instance could just knock them out of whatever they're doing. A few years ago, my wife had a life-threatening injury that that we couldn't have gotten through without help. And for us, that meant turning to our family, turning to our very generous church family. You know, and I know there are so many people who do not have that opportunity and that the opportunity for us to step up and help take care of their other Moline residents is just something that I'm very happy to see. Pardon me. There was one thing in the program that I wanted to bring up. I'd like to see us make a small change to how we're approaching with the edificational components, really opening it up. Because right now, we just have an enumerated list of institutions, so I want to move forward to allow all institutions, because I just think that's a simple widening we can go for. So I'd like to propose an amendment in the "How to Qualify" section, removing the text for "Level A." And I will have this clerk for the, in writing for you. To replace it with "Single parent or two-parent families where a parent is enrolled in an educational program, such as at Black Hawk College, WIUQC, Unity Point, or University of Illinois Nursing Programs, or in a local apprenticeship in a trade organization, or other credentialing program." "A parent is defined as any legal guardian who claims the children as a dependent on tax returns. Parameters and qualification extend to parents of children 18 years of age and younger."
Is there a second to that amendment? Second, Mr. Macias, discussion on the amendment. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
And just making sure it's clear to everyone, the only words I added there was adding the "such as" and adding "or other credentialing programs" after "trade organizations." Otherwise, that text was read verbatim out of the original documentation, just as clarity of what I added.
I'll add to that, that removing obstacles is pretty much the focus of this entire program. And so we can't have an enumerated list be an obstacle. We need to leave that as open as possible to you all. And we know, we have confirmation from you, that you will verify enrollments and all the things you already do for all the federal and state programs, you know, that require that level of documentation. So I think we have clarity on that, so. Is there anything further on the amendment? If not, can I, a roll call, please? Alder Person Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, none nays. All right. Is there anything further for discussion from the council on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alder Person Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We move to 8.9, an ordinance amending Chapter 13, zoning and land development and Moline Court of Ordinances, Article 1, General Provisions and Administration, Division 2, Word Usage, Abbreviations and Definitions, Section 35-1203. Definitions, Article 3, Zoning, Division 4, Land Use Regulations, Section 35-34.0, excuse me, 3401. Regulation of Allowed Uses, Table 35-3401.1. Permitted Land Uses, Section 35-3408. Principal Commercial Land Uses, Section 35-3414. Accessory Commercial Land Uses Regarding Zoning Text Amendments Concerning Food Trucks or Motorized Food Vendors. Mr. Dykes?
Thank you, Your Honor. The City Code as written lacked specific definitions to accommodate a food truck park. That is, therefore, those definitions are added here. The amendments also relate to finding a hard surface and parking for the trucks. The changes were considered by the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission properly posted for a public hearing. That hearing was conducted on August 9, 2023, and the Commission voted eight ayes, zero nays for approval. And I believe Director Mathias is on remotely, and he may have more to add if there are questions.
Okay.
Yes, I am, Your Honor, and I'm properly unmuted now, thank you. And man, what an inspiring, the Reverend is just so inspiring, wow. But to add to this here, the only thing I would add to what Barry said is that these are all being added as special uses in the code. That means you'll have to apply for a special use permit. It will be reviewed by the Plan Commission on a site plan basis before they're allowed to go in. But otherwise, Barry summed it up very well.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias, discussion? Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
I guess I got a question for both of you guys. Do you see a proliferation, if that's the right word to use, for these food trucks? Because we got some storefronts we'd like to occupy. And it's, I know it's a lot easier having rented office space and, you know, all that is expensive if you're in a business. As we've seen, I mean, now we've got this, you know, businesses can do remotely. We've got empty buildings downtown, not totally empty, but a lot of them are fairly empty. I just, you know, I know people like these food trucks, and you see them out around, but I just, I'm a little concerned that it's a lot cheaper and easier to do a food truck than, you know. And I know Chris just said they have to come back every time they want to do it, but we're probably going to approve it. But, I mean, how many of these do you foresee? I mean, that's probably an unfair question, but...
Well, you could go ahead and answer that, Steph, if you would like.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just a couple of things to agree with Alderman O'Brien. It's important to fill the vacant storefronts, right? And we have to emphasize that and continue to use all the tools, you know, at our disposal to do that, you know, Old Town, Uptown, all those places. But no, this doesn't include any kind of limitation on it like you would see with maybe, you know, a slot business or something like that. There's no limitation on this happening. I think this is simply just responding to a trend in the food industry, and not just the food industry, but kind of like, I don't know, the placemaking industry almost, of like, this is happening with a lot of events and those type of things, too. So really just trying to make the zoning code fit with some of those modern trends that weren't there 20 years ago when the code was developed.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Mathias. And also, we have the person who runs a food truck park currently in the audience with us. And I've been to that, and it's a wonderful innovation in the city, and it's in a part of the city that hasn't received a ton of investment focus in the recent past on the, on your side, just different ward. But I...
Yeah, I see it. I drive by it.
Yeah, so I think, you know, if we're going to, and it's your decision, obviously, but if we are, if we live up to what we've talked about in terms of business, entrepreneurship, and variety and all of that, we probably have to put some trust in the special use permit process and that process to help us continue to balance brick and mortar with food truck things. That's my personal opinion, obviously you all vote on it. Yes, Ms. Castro?
The food truck is a good first step for someone who's trying to open up a restaurant or open up a business. Someone might not have the capital to go in and run out a space and have a full restaurant, but maybe they can start as a food truck. I know actually a friend of mine who had a food truck, but now they're actually talking about going ahead. They've got their following, so they're wanting to open up a restaurant. So I think it's a, I mean, it's a good first step.
To your point, Ms. Castro, La Salsa Dona Mary, down on the other side of the parking lot, started that exact same way. And our partners at Arcato on Fifth make that part of, I think, their business, launching navigator processes. How do you go from where you're at to something bigger? If that's perspective for you.
Do you guys plan to open up a brick and mortar?
Can we, can we have you come to, is that fine? Yes, please come to the podium. Go ahead.
I actually don't operate a food truck. I operate the, what I would like to call it, food truck park, but I can't yet. So this passes. I started this very specifically because I grew up in that side of town. I grew up on 50th Street Court, I bought on 28th Avenue. The piece of property that I bought was purchased by the township, by the South Moline Township 15 years ago. It has not been collecting taxes, nobody can purchase it. The slaughterhouse that used to be there is buried in the ground. So the odds of somebody being able to use that land for anything is almost nothing. So I purchased that land so that my local community could use it. We could not only get taxes from it, because townships don't pay taxes, we could start businesses there. I have to drive to Davenport to eat food from a food truck that lives two blocks away from my house. Every, we have 27 food trucks in Moline, and you'll never see them. You've got three that frequent Moline. They go to Davenport, they pay Davenport fees for their licenses. They pay fees to the farmers' markets over in Davenport every single time they go out there. That's money we're not getting. A lady that actually had a bakery over in Davenport is now, because I'm physically helping her, becoming a licensed truck in Moline. That is an $800 expense to a 20-year-old kid. In Iowa, you buy one license for the whole state. For Illinois, you have to pay for a license in every single city that you operated. They still pay sales taxes, they still conduct business. The amount of people that are now traveling from Davenport for things like Cosina Verde, because they're one of the few vegan trucks that we have, they come here. And a lot of them do, like you said. They, one of the trucks started with a little tag along. Now they've got a food truck. They actually were in talks a year ago with Moline to try and find a brick and mortar way to do a business, and it just didn't pan out for them fiscally yet. But they're getting to the point now where they have the funds to do that, and will probably end up going that way. What I'm trying to do is give Moline the same experience that you get in other places. We don't have anything in that area, there's not even a park. If you want to do something in that area, you have to walk the cemetery. If you want to eat, you eat at the same places that were there when I was a child, except Denny's went under and Los Agaves took over. And businesses are okay with it. Los Agaves customer, or employees come eat at the food trucks on their break. My customers still eat there. This is just opening a whole nother venue to an area that needs change. It's not to put anybody out of business.
Got it. Thank you.
And a lot of businesses already have food trucks as well. The brick and mortars have gone out and gotten food trucks so that they can travel outside their own brick and mortar. So sometimes it's a two-way.
Thank you so much. Sorry. If there are no other questions from the council, comments, I'll take a roll call, please. Alder Person Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, none nays? Thank you. We move to our informationals, Chief Motorola Nitro Private LTE.
Good evening, Your Honor, thank you very much. I appreciate the time. I'll try to be brief. There is a very lengthy packet in your agenda with some significantly detailed information about this presentation. And certainly, we could get really into the weeds and some technical discussion here, but I'll try to keep it really high level so you get kind of an overview of a concept known as private LTE. And so on this slide here, I wanted to point out that this project aligns with Objective 1.1. You're designed to have citywide broadband, as well as Objective 1.4, having integrated traffic safety monitoring system. So on behalf of Josh Whiting and David Dreyer, and David Rowett, and obviously the Police Department staff, we have been looking at this as an enhancement towards, steps towards a smart city and trying to reach the two of these objectives. So the reason that we started to talk about private LTE really came out of the Police Department. As you know, we have multiple locations for citywide surveillance. Those are very successful. We wanted to continue to expand those. And a couple of years ago, we ran into the lack of fiber. And you know that through the last couple of years of the city's exploration of a fiber project. So Bob Edes and City Hall staff were trying to work towards dark fiber throughout the city, meaning that strands of fiber would be dedicated just to municipal use, not to anything else, just to municipal use. And those estimates were $7 million for eight strands dedicated to the city with an additional $350,000 in annual maintenance. We tried to just simply add a fiber line across John Deere Road. It was to be $35,000 just for the conduit to run a, basically a patch, to connect two pieces of fiber for us to put up some cameras down by Walmart. So we abandoned that project and started to look at some other solutions. And meanwhile, as I was working with city staff, found out that in traffic engineering was trying to march towards the traffic management system project. And to connect all of our over 100 traffic lights, in essence, to a cloud-based system would be about $300,000. They're working on now kind of a segmented system where they still have to physically go to each one of them. It wouldn't be cloud-based, which is about $150,000. We started to talk about, could we roll all these projects together? And then also bring in some of our other department directors. At the time, Ryan Beatlock was here, we talked about flood management. I know the Parks Department, the Fire Department, other departments were like, hey, you know, we could maybe do different things if we were a smart city. If you know anything about smart cities, it's the digital age, the digital information, the pushing of digital information throughout the city. Something as simple as, hey, you want a food truck park? Could we connect a city kiosk in that food truck park for people to go there and then pay their city bills? Right now, the answer is no, because there's not a fiber line. Right now, the answer is no, because there's not a fiber line that somebody could knock out two things at one time, eat and do some business on your lunch hour. But this product might be able to solve that problem for us. Now, why is private LTE similar to a cellular tower network? All of you have, I'm sure, cell phones and probably there's at least four or five different cellphone companies providing you service in this room. The way you access their system is through a SIM card that allows you to get on their network. We are proposing our own network, in essence. LTE networks use radio wave frequencies that provide excellent coverage over a large surface area with signals that penetrate dense materials. They can handle that last missing mile connection to fiber. We're not proposing to eliminate fiber or even say the, the city shouldn't continue to march towards buried fiber. I have several people, I'll introduce you to in a minute here on the phone and they're, they're this, they're providing this product and they'll tell you, fiber is king. Buried fiber is king, but it's expensive. It's hard to get. It's hard to install. And we don't have it right now. And, and the, the prospect of us putting in fiber throughout the city for city use is probably a multi-year project. And so we, we still think that you should continue to march towards buried fiber. But this can connect those last miles and, and get us an established fiber coverage that, that we could get in areas that we either do not have now or frankly, may never have fiber coverage to. So we would establish towers at fiber points such as water towers or other city infrastructure. And then we can connect the Internet of Things. You'll see this I little OT, Internet of Things devices such as traffic controllers, flood monitors, smart devices like kiosks, or even cameras. Now, I will tell you, this is probably going to benefit some of the other departments a little bit better than it will me, even though I somehow, and this is a good example of never volunteering for anything because I'd be getting stuck with it. But I thought it would be a solution to cameras, but the cameras are heavy bandwidth. And we're going to have to be very careful of, of using cameras on this product. We can do it. We're going to do it with a couple of them on this pilot if you prove it later on. But it's not, it's, it's really heavy bandwidth. So some of these other devices like traffic management push very low throughput of digital devices and it's not a heavy, heavy drain on the system. So you can see kind of what that private cellular network could look like. And private LTE has been around for a long time. It started in the mining industry. There's a little snippet, if you're interested in there, about how it kind of bore out of the Australian mining industry and then they carved out a segment for the government. But in essence, this system runs on the system broadband radio service with a 3.5 gigahertz band. In the past, that was only available to the US government, but in 2019, it became partly available for commercial use. And it's, you know, similar to Wi-Fi, but a little bit different. And this is obviously a better product. And you can see this as a, a monopole with somewhat something similar device. So on the phone today, we have a couple of representatives of Motorola that I've been working very closely with for almost a year now. Bernie Basenberg is, is on the phone and Dominic Starelli, both from Motorola. And then Haseen, one of the sales engineers, have been really working hard to help us go, understand the product, what the limitations or the opportunities were for Moline. I've been very impressed with their interaction with our department directors and really some thoughtful product or thoughtful processes on the product and being honest with us on what we could and couldn't use it for. And then helping us understand how we could future-proof this product for expansion to 5G or if the city expands, we need to add more towers, how we could potentially double the carrier aggregation for this and, and continue to expand it. So what our proposal is, is to start this in, in phases. In phase one, starting on the water tower near Washington Elementary, 41st Street, 14th Avenue, establishing one site on the top of there that we could run several traffic controller devices in that 44th Street Avenue, the city's corridor. And you can see in the green there how we would have kind of a limited coverage area. But we'd be able to get this up and running, test it, see how it works for, for our city. And then eventually build out other tower sites on other vertical assets that the city already owns, like water towers, or potentially have to construct a monopole. We think probably more on the south side of town, as you know, it's a very flat part of Moline. But potentially having to build a monopole on that side of town to continue to build out our, our coverage. And here you can see, I think it says in the corner, 90% coverage in that area as you see that they'll start to overlap. So phase one, of course, is always an expensive endeavor because you've got the core, the guts of any project like this. And so you can see some of the, the costs that would go with that and about $264,000 for that phase one. And then as we moved into phase two, we're looking at getting the entire system up and running for, so let's just say around a million if we had some cost overruns or some increases. As we know, inflation is, is, is our enemy at this point. But so we would look at around that. And then of course, at the same time, traffic engineering, working to build out the traffic controllers and then eventually connecting all these devices that we think will be probably about a $1.5 million project. I will tell you that Motorola has a good example of this live right now in Pittsburgh, Kansas. In your packet, in the agenda packet, I did interview the, the staff in Pittsburgh, Kansas, just to give you a very small snippet, about 20,000 population in southeast Kansas, about 12.8 square miles, 8,000 households, 12 parks, two libraries, a casino, six public schools, three private schools, three colleges, one hospital, a small municipal airport. Little bit lower resident population, but somewhat similar to Moline. And I will tell you, it's very flat in Kansas, not demographically or the topography is not the same here. So we'll have some different challenges. But they started with an initial project of about $250,000 to construct this private LTE network with Motorola. And they went live in 2020, Christmas Eve in 2020. We'll try to avoid that on Christmas Eve day. And then to date, they've invested about $1.5 million. If you want some more details, certainly in the packet. They spoke very highly of the product, basically spoke very highly of Motorola and the experience that they've had. And so we think this would be a great opportunity to achieve those two objectives to, it's not just a police department project, this would touch probably every single department in the city of Moline, thus impacting numerous residents across multiple sectors of the city. And there's really, really no limit to the imagination of Internet of Things that could be connected to this. I'll pause there and give Bernie maybe a, a quick opportunity to interject or dominate from Motorola, if either of you guys have anything briefly to say that I might have missed about the, the product.
Hi, thanks, Chief. I appreciate that. You, you might be better selling that product than I could even sell it. So I appreciate the presentation. No, I think you hit everything on the nose there. Not too much to add. Other, no, I, I don't think there's much to add there, but we're excited to be a part of the project. I think, as you mentioned, getting in front of different departments within the city is going to be a great, great future-proofing of this system and we're excited to be a part of the project.
So your probably initial thought as you're sitting is how are we going to fund this? And now you'll have some budget constraints as you go through budget workshops. So right now, the city of Moline is eligible. We have been told we've been awarded a grant through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. We're supposed to already be here for community development and violence prevention. We've been working with community economic development staff, the great managers there. We've applied for it. We're, we're told that we're going to get this money. We've had some conversations with them. It's, it's been delayed as all good state projects are. With that, would allow us to shift some money around and basically fund this project with that grant once it comes in. So we think it may be cost neutral to your budget. There may be some other departments that have devices that they want to put in their budgets to connect to the system. But to potentially build the system, we think that as long as this grant comes through, we would be able to cover it with those funds.
Anything further from the council? Love it this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, nine point two, Mr. Griffith, tennis and footsaw courts at Riverside Park.
Okay, so this was presented back at the June roundtable discussion about CIP. I've got a little bit more information for you. This first slide, you've seen it already, but this is kind of the breakdown of what it would cost in different scenarios. And this is real 2023 numbers. We bid this out as alternates when Emory Construction was awarded the contract for the parking lot and the road work. So the resurfacing is simply filling cracks, repainting the whole tennis courts and then repainting, repainting the lines. This is truly a Band-Aid fix of five to seven years. This was done back six years ago. And I mean, we have done this probably a dozen times over the years. There is two layers of asphalt on, on top of what used to be, I can't remember what it was called offhand, but it was kind of like a dirt crushed up like brick mixture when, before asphalt courts started coming out. From my understanding, these courts were built sometime in the 1970s. I haven't really gotten a good, it's built here. I've talked to several people that remember playing on them when they first became asphalt around the 1970s. So these court, these courts are definitely overdue. Like I said, we did this about six years ago. And every time you resurface and fill the cracks, you're, it's, it's just, it's not really preventing any new cracks from happening. You're just filling what's existing there. The new sport court tile, which is the picture on the right-hand side, it's a tile system. It's one by one. The, the interlock, it's a floating surface. It is not, you don't like glue it down to the asphalt or anything like that. This is the module system of USA Pickleball, so the ball will bounce on that. The sport court, you can play basketball on. You can play, you know, footsaw on. You can pretty much play whatever you'd like on it. I will say, I reached out to several park districts and there are dead spots because it is not glued down. If the ball hits it at a different, you know, a unique angle, the ball will die. The rubberized surface is a little bit more expensive than the sport court tile, but you can only really play tennis on that rubberized surface. It's a, it's a sheets of rubber that are glued down, heat-seamed together and have a 20-year life cycle that can, we were actually, back in 17, this was an option as well. We got a lot of backlash that, you know, it's good for the knees. It's good for joints. It's good if you, you know, get hurt. But if you're not used to playing on a rubberized surface for tennis, it's really a unique challenge to do. Before I move on, the sport court tile has a 15-year warranty on it. The, the rubberized surface has a 20-year warranty as well. The last two, the asphalt courts, so similar to what we have for the pickleball courts, the asphalt courts, they have typically about a 20-year life cycle. Every five to seven years, you'll need to repaint, fill cracks. Even after the first year of the pickleball courts being there, we had to fill some cracks as part of the warranty. It is a little bit cheaper than the post-tension concrete courts. But overall, if you can afford to do the concrete, they're going to last a lot longer than 20 years. The concrete is so compressed together that you're not really going to see the cracks like you do for the asphalt courts. And you're gonna still have to paint over time, but your cost to paint in comparison to filling cracks or filling voids is going to be significantly less. So over time, the concrete courts just make more sense if, if the budget is there. Page two. Sorry, I should have done a PowerPoint. So the soccer courts, the picture on the left-hand side shows what the two courts are going to be at Stevens Park. They're, these courts will be for basketball and footsaw. The pricing up there for the 2023 were also some of the information that we got from bidding it out. $208,702 for two courts at Riverside seems really cheap. And it's because they were already going to have equipment. They are doing either concrete or asphalt at Riverside to begin with. So it wasn't much more expensive to do a little bit more asphalt or concrete as part of the project. That picture up there shows what the park board, probably last December, had approved, the layout of having eight courts with a sidewalk connecting to the two in blue, the soccer courts, giving that a little bit of a separation. Because if we had all three sections going, it'd be pretty loud, kind of giving a little bit of space and parking. You know, we, as part of the, doing the road work, we, we saved some money by not having to do some of the drainage around the tennis court. So we were able to asphalt overlay the tennis parking lot. So we didn't increase that, but we do have a new parking lot or will have a new parking lot. So this will give a little bit more parking for the different areas as well. That picture down below is what, you know, different colors and, and what those soccer courts really can look like. And then the last page is showing that really we could do a lot of different things with the courts that we have. The picture on the left-hand side is from a park district in Chicago. This shows it originally was four tennis courts and it has two tennis courts in the middle, pickleball courts at one end and basketball at the other. The blue one at the top is kind of hard to see, but those are footsaw courts with pickleball courts striped in the middle. And then like I showed the picture before, the ones that we're doing at Stevens Park are for basketball and footsaw. So there's really, you know, depending on what the budget is, we could really do a good mixture of, you know, whatever we would like to do with the courts that we have or codes, codes that we are proposing. So yes, this has been a part of the Riverside Legacy Project for the last, boy, when was it? Fall? October of 2021? That we had public input and unfortunately, we bid out one of the biggest projects, Parks and Recs, ever done at one of the worst times with a pandemic and inflation. But any consideration on this project would be greatly appreciated. I just want to say one more note about the memo that I sent to the city council in May, right when the, the new city council came on. So I'll just refresh that there is and can be some economic impacts with these courts. Quad City Pickleball Club has hosted their tournament at Riverside Park the last two years. In 2022, they had over 400 participants with over 120 rooms. So it wasn't just local people participating in this tournament. There was people from, from all over. And that had a, a direct impact of over $63,000 to the, to the economic, to our community. And then what Brad said earlier, we do have a really good opportunity to get this regional qualifier for USA Pickleball. Visit Quad Cities, has had some discussions with them. I actually called them when I, right before I wrote this memo. And it's actually a four-day tournament that can bring in, you know, close to 1,000, if not over 1,000 people to the area. The reason why they like the Quad Cities so much is not because, you know, we have a lot of players, a lot of courts throughout the cities, but the drivability. I mean, if you really look at, they look at between like a four and six-hour radius. You could get across Iowa in five hours. I definitely know that. You get across Iowa, Milwaukee, Chicago, St. Louis, Kansas City, Des Moines, all of that could be a huge, a huge draw for our community. So I did send this to you guys in May. If you would like me to resend it, I can definitely share that again, but just wanted to reiterate that.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, looking at the, the tennis court options, which of those options allow us to move forward with, like you said, like the pickleball tournaments, those pieces? Like, I understand the, the cost difference and the, how long it lasts. And those pieces all make sense to me, but what are we really getting or what level do we have to invest at to make sure we can move forward?
So when I spoke to him, I talked to him about, I was presenting all these different options and, and you can resurface, like I said, for the 170,000. And there's about 20,000 that also includes painting the fence. That fence is very old too. And I think if you're going to invest resurfacing, you might as well paint, make it look a little bit nicer. So the resurfacing is an option. The sport court tile, I really don't think, it, it is an option because it is the module system of pickleball, but I really don't think that the citizens of the community would like the, the, the tile. And talking to some of the park districts, even one of the directors said, if I had to do it all over again, I would have resurfaced and waited another five to seven years, then put the tile down. And so that leaves you, the rubberized surface really only works for tennis and I don't think that achieves what we're trying to do. So then it leaves you with concrete and asphalt. If you're going to do asphalt, might as well spend a little bit more because over the life life of those courts, it will be worth it. Did I answer, was that, it was very broad, I pretty much.
No, that, that was exactly it, and, and it's interesting that we end up with either the lowest cost or the highest cost. I mean, those are really the only ones I think we should be looking at. And I do think that the point made by several members of the community tonight, and I think as, as conversations have been going, is this is something that we wanted to be a part of that, the, the pool project was not able to be, and I think we made the right choice of going back at that time, but it's definitely something I'm interested in making sure we revisit in the right way. I, I once upon a time was very much an advocate of new, but I think the, the financial situation is such that maybe we have to talk about, hey, if we can get to that resurface, make sure it's, it's ripe, it's working, and that we are planning down the road of how we're gonna look at new, hopefully that next time, or we're, as opposed to continuing to resurface.
Thank you for all of that. I, I want to say too, to, to Mr. Dye's point about pickleball here to stay, just last night, we said yes to our child going to play pickleball at 8 o'clock at night, and she didn't come home till 10:00.
Lights, lights work till 1:15.
This is, you know, teenagers, they, I mean, I'd rather, much rather have our youth feeling engaged with city services at any time and feeling good about their home.
And I forgot to plug for the Quad City Pickleball Club, their tournament is this weekend, and they have pretty close to 400 people, and I'm not shocked by that, but just the, the fact that Riverside is heavily under construction and they can still put on a quality tournament and still get the bodies is pretty awesome, so.
Thank you so much. Might as well stay up there for 9.3. And please, Alderperson Murphy, if you have something to ask or add, just unmute and say something, because I can't see you on the screen at the moment. All right.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So the skate park and pump track under the I-74. So a little bit of background, this really came out from when Renew Moline and the ULI did a virtual, virtual tour of the areas downtown. So with that, one of the biggest things that came out was the skate park. When they did their surveys, they had over four, I believe it was 482 responses to having a skate park, so I think that really opened up the city council's eyes at the time and said, hey, I think we need to look at this a little bit more. So through the public input process, in 2021, we did an RFQ in fall of 2022, and picking New Line Skate Park in February of this year. I will reiterate that, I'm not surprised, but I just, I'm still kind of in shock on how some of our projects that we've had in the city, the kind of talent that we're getting, we had four of the five biggest skateboard company, design companies in the world want to design this project, because it's so unique to Illinois, and then like the aquatics, you know, swimming pool, we had seven of the eight biggest ones as well, so it's just really awesome to see that projects like that can get some of the great talent for design. So page number two, nothing too really interesting, as part of this, they did some surveying, they did some soil testing, they did some geotechnical reporting. That just kind of shows the area between Fourth Avenue and, and Fifth Avenue, the proposal where, where everything would be, and some pictures of it, so. Next page, really talks about, the next couple talk about the concept of design development. Several city council members and park board members attended those meetings. The first one happened back in May of this year, we've had about 40 individuals come, and we did a presentation, we, we had poster boards up there that they could put little dots on what they liked and what they didn't like, and then New Line actually brought pieces of skate parks, some people were able to cut it out and actually lay out what their dream skate park and pump track would be, and I thought that was really interesting to really see, you know, younger citizens, older citizens, people that have just heard about this project, and people that skateboard all coming together and trying to say, hey, you know, we just want to make sure that this has public art, that this is pretty, this, this is, you know, a destination from our downtown. So what I really thought was interesting is 81% of the people that was surveyed during this concept number one were from Moline. Now, one of the exciting parts was New Line, when they were telling us that they had 265 people take the survey, cities 10 times the size of us get about 300 surveys. So the fact that we're such a small community, but then getting the participation in our surveys and in person, they said it's been a long time since they've got participation over 100 responses, so I thought that was really interesting. The next one, they came back a month later, presented two different designs. The first one was the river design and the, the triangle design. I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna pretend like I know a lot about skate parks, I'll tell you more information after we get through this area. We didn't have as many people come to that first one, that was getting towards the end of the school year, there was a concert at the Vibrant Arena, it's just very challenging at sometimes to get, you know, a date that works for everyone. Had over 100 responses to the survey the second time as well, which is still really good for the size of city we are. What we did find out though, is they really want a street slash plaza design, where it's like if you were, it's not like your typical, like when I think of when I was a kid, when Tony Hawk skateboarding was out, you think of like the wood ramps and the wood half-pipes and stuff like that. No, it's designed to look like something on down, like a downtown area. The next page talks about the two different designs, and I thought it was really interesting. Design number two was the clear winner in person, but then in the survey, it was design number one. So the New Line took that information and said, okay, what did they truly like from one and, and two? And so what they did is they looked at it and said, okay, from, you know, the, the phase one, they really liked the, the smaller bowl and the pump track, and then, and the other, the other design, they liked the more plaza skateboarding. And so what they did is, in that final design, which is listed here, they took from the right side and from the left side and then kind of combined it. During that process, they wanted to make sure that we, you know, we looked at it, this is not just a skate park, as it's a destination, we wanted to make sure that it doesn't stick out, we want it to be a piece of art. We talk about public art downtown, but wanting to make sure that this park is unique and beautiful at the end of the day. So the final concept on the next page kind of shows everything that they took from public input, the surveys, they want to build a skate park that is for everyone, doesn't matter if it's a kid picking up a skateboard for the very first time, or someone that's been skateboarding for, for a number of years. They don't want the ramps to be six, eight, 10 feet tall, they don't want the bowls to be that deep, they want it to be challenging but also accessible. They want it to be easily navigated, but also different sections of the park, like the pump track, the bowl, you know, the, the plaza area to have a separate area. As this shows the different flow in and out of the skate park, the blue is actually for pedestrians, we wanted to make sure that if, if a parent wanted to come, or if they were hosting a competition, that there's areas for them to be without them getting in the way, and just different flows of what, you know, making sure it makes sense. There are some skate parks around that are made for, it's more challenging, and so we want to make sure that we're attracting people from all over to come use it. Next page, the next couple pages, we don't really jump into, since this is a 30% design, we don't really jump into the really fine details of signage and water fountains and bike racks and all that kind of stuff, but we did want to make sure that we had that information in there, that if this moves on to phase two, that we will explore those things for, and all those are pretty standard information. And then also wanting to incorporate some type of public art into it. I think the biggest thing we talked about is wanting to incorporate the, the old I-74 bridge, and that's a skate rail, but it could also be like a, you could lock your bike up, like there was another example we didn't put in there of, of a bike rack that looked like a bridge. So there's a lot of different ways that we can include in that, and I think that will kind of fall in line with the public art piece that's, that were, that has been discussed and approved downtown. So the last couple of pages show, you know, this is to scale of what this skate park and pump track could look like. So these first pages, the trees on the bottom right are the trees that are currently planted up on the I-74 area. As you can see, this doesn't look like what you think a skate park does. And the nice thing about this, and it's something that cities all across the United States are rethinking, is programming under bridges. Milwaukee has pickleball courts, they have swing parks under there, I just read an article from the National Parks and Rec Association, that San Antonio, Texas, because it's, you know, days are getting longer, they're getting hotter, and they have several parks that are underneath bridges. And if we had something like this under a bridge, you know, like the winter we had last year where it only had four snow events, we, this could be used pretty much all year round if we wanted to. So the next page shows a couple more different, well, that bowl is only about four feet deep. The, the city I came from, when we built a skate park, it was eight, an eight-foot bowl, well, eight feet is, is pretty tall, but one of the first weekends it was open, a kid got stuck in there, and so they actually called the non-emergency. I was on call, and they called, they were like, Eric, how do we get this kid? I'm like, call the fire department. I don't know, I was like, I don't know. And so it was a kid trying to use an eight-foot bowl that had no reason to be in there. And so I think this is what we're trying to hit on, is making sure that this is accessible for, for anyone, but also challenging at the same time. And then the last page kind of gives a breakdown of everything. So this presentation was given to IDOT last week, we had Alex from Renew Moline and myself had a good conversation with them, we also supplied them with the CAD drawings from this as well. Didn't really want to get into the CAD drawings, because I don't know much about them, and you guys probably don't either, so you'd probably be bored with that. This would be the second skate park in the state of Illinois to be under a bridge, and like I said, this kind of, you know, regardless of it, that this project moves forward or gets picked for later on in the budget, it's really gives us an opportunity to do some type of programming under bridges, where before they were just kind of a catch-all for garbage. So this is broken out into different phases to just show that if you didn't want to, you know, fund the whole thing right away, kind of gives a breakdown of, of phase one, phase two. The two most important things that came out of the survey, and that's why it's in phase one, is the pump track and the, the street plaza area for skate, for skateboarding. So I can answer any questions at this point, or if you want me to jump more into the numbers, but.
Anyone have questions? I, I would like to see the breakdown of maintenance or operational costs, because this essentially is another park.
Yep.
You know, we, we can't build it and then not be able to pay for its upkeep, whether it's manpower or, or what, I think we need to have those numbers in front of us as well.
Yep, I would definitely say that if this park was chosen, I would request another park maintenance employee. I don't think, you know, you are gonna have graffiti, you are gonna have some problems with the park, and we don't want it to get away from us. As far as operational costs, as of, you know, graffiti remover, I don't think there'll be too much, it's not a huge cost, but our biggest cost would be an extra staff person, would be.
Well, and, you know, obviously those need to be fleshed out, and I expect you have that number right now.
Correct, yeah.
That, that's my suggestion. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Macias?
Yes, thank you. Do you, or the, the consultants from New Line, do they have any idea as far as like tournaments or events that could be held, what kind of events could be held?
Yeah, so had that conversation as a committee, Jonathan who wrote in for public comment is on that committee, we've talked about programming and having, you know, Learn to Skate or Skate Days, having where, you know, he knows the, the owner of skate, you know, skate shops in Des Moines and, and areas in Chicago, building that where there's a competition here, and then the next, you know, next month or next couple of weeks, the competition is here, and trying to bring that to, bringing it to.
Like a tour.
Moline, yeah.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're such at an advantage, being right in the middle of Des Moines and Chicago, with Des Moines having the largest skate park in the world, but then traveling through and doing competitions in the Chicago area, we put a heavy emphasis on wanting to bring a, an event or two like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I would really like to see us having that opportunity to move forward with this. I think this is a great opportunity, but I also think it's just gonna be a struggle to figure out where that's gonna come at financially, and that's something I know, I mean, I've talked to, to Jonathan when I'm down at the shop, and, and looking around and trying to figure out how we can make that make sense, I think it's gonna be our, the biggest challenge moving it forward, but it, it's an exciting project to see, and I hope we can, can find that path forward.
So this project would also qualify for the OSLID, great, timing really didn't work out this year because we would still be in design. The number that was provided by Renew Moline back in, in 2021 was really a number from 2019 of the 1.5, and I thought, when, when they did a presentation to us and they said every month that a project goes by, it's roughly 1%, the price goes up in skateboarding and pump tracks, so if we're talking a $3 million project in a year from now, it could be, you know, 720 extra thousand, it just, it's pretty crazy, about 1% every month, so.
Well, the timing is good for these conversations, because next week, we talk with our amazing finance director about how and what to pay for, et cetera, so those discussions are coming soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I'll close out that council meeting, or excuse me, committee at the whole meeting and call the council meeting to order with the pledge allegiance, please. My apologies, I was looking right at it, and I skipped over 9.4, September citizen information report. If you would indulge us in adding that here at the council meeting, does anybody have anything they wanted to add or question staff about that? I do have some observations, I will email them to you, but as always, it's very much appreciated, especially the staff that has to compile the answers and the updates for those monthly reports, we appreciate it. All right, Ms. Finch, do you have an invocation? Okay, roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy?
Sorry.
Present. Macias?
Present.
Rozak? Timian?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of August 22nd, 2023, appointments made at Committee of the Whole on September 12th, 2023, and consent agenda items 15.1 through 15.6 inclusively.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Castro. Roll call, please. Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Item 17.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 35, altered speed limits by reducing the speed limit along 30, 34th Street between Fifth Avenue and 12th Avenue to 35 miles per hour.
Move to approve.
Second. All right, motion by Alderperson O'Brien, seconded by Finch. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Item 17.2, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 4 Alcoholic Liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances to be more business-friendly and to streamline the liquor licensing process.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Alderperson Schmidt, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Finch? Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number eighteen point one, a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept the Operation Underground Railroad Global Rescue and Recovery Support Mutual Agreement for the receipt of contributions mutual agreement document governing contributions from OUR to the Moline Police Department for the acquisition of an electronic storage detection canine and authorizing the chief of police to submit the electronic storage detection canine award application to Jordan Detection Canine, setting forth the terms of participation in the not-for-profit grant program and acceptance ESD canine.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Item eighteen point two, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Port Security Grant Program Award for the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and acknowledging that that the terms of the agreement articles obligating document fiscal year twenty twenty-three Port Security Grant Program Notice of Funding Opportunity and FEMA Preparedness Grants Manual are incorporated into the terms of the grant award received on behalf of the Department of Homeland Security and authorizing the police business analyst to digitally accept said award and its terms and authorizing the police department staff to do all things necessary to administer said grant. Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion, motion by Alderperson Finch, uh, seconded by O'Brien. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Ayes.
Six ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number nineteen point one and ordinance amending chapter twenty-two, offenses miscellaneous, article one, division one, section twenty-two dash eleven oh five, tobacco products, tobacco accessories, smoking herbs, and alternative nicotine products of the City of Moline ordinance Code of Ordinances regarding tobacco dealer licenses. Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, that's Alderperson Finch and Alderperson O'Brien. Um, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy? Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and motion to advance the second reading carries. Item nineteen point two, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-five zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, article one, general provisions and administration, division two, word usage, abbreviations and definitions, section thirty-five dash twelve oh three, definitions, article three, zoning, division four, land use regulations, section thirty-five dash thirty-four oh eight, principal commercial land uses, and article five, site improvement and performance standards, division one, parking and loading standards, section thirty-five dash fifty-one hundred point three, off-street parking and traffic circulation standards, minimum required parking spaces regarding zoning text amendments concerning minimum off-street parking and traffic circulation standards for in-vehicle sales and service uses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, all right, so.
Motion to.
Motion to advance the second.
Thank you, thank you for correcting yourself. That's uh Alderperson Schmidt, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Macias. Um, discussion. I, yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Um, I'm glad we went back through and and got feedback on on these items and looked at them from the drive-throughs, but um I'd like to make a motion to remove the requirement for drive-through facilities being located in front of the principal building.
No, it's not a requirement that they can't be in located in the front.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove that requirement.
Okay, thank you. That they not be there. Yes, thank you.
Second.
There's a second by Alderperson. So that was first Schmidt, seconded by Alderperson Macias on this amendment. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I I think that one of the the principal places where I thought this runs into conflict with the businesses we are seeing up already operating in this city is in a lot of like drive-through coffee shops where they're having the double drive-through and they have it on all four sides. It's a requirement that has not existed in the city for a long time. And um I just think if you already are having the drive-through, you're already having that kind of footprint. I don't think it honestly is making that big of a difference to putting on that front face in our commercial districts. Um, you know, and a lot of these lots too, if it's on a corner lot, well, one lot's forward and the others to the side. And I it just, it seems to me like a restriction is not necessary. And so I think we should just pull that one out.
Anything further? Discussion-wise? Hearing none, roll call on this amendment to remove the require remove the prohibition of the drive-through lane in the front of the building. Uh, roll call, please. Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. All right, we're back to the motion itself uh uh to as amended to advance to second reading. Any further conversation, Mr. Schmidt?
Uh, there's another item that I may be interested in putting a motion for, but I want to hear feedback on. The Plan Commission had removed the bypass lanes. And when I spoke to someone from the Plan Commission, it was communicated that the the fear was putting an extra undue requirement, especially on our already existing businesses. Um, there's a number of places that have those uh that would not be able to put in a bypass lane, um, either because of how close their lanes are to the end of the property or because of construction that would stop it. Um, but I think as we think about the needs of our residents and these are our traffic patterns, that we should look to have bypass lanes as much as possible. And I'm just curious if others have strong feelings one way or the other. I also think we something we can make apply only to new construction perhaps is a way to kind of meet in the middle to say, we're not going after those current ones, but let's make sure we don't keep not having them.
If you if you don't mind me responding, I uh I brought that up when we first decided to send this back. I was concerned, but I my fears were alleviated just by reading the definitions of what a bypass lane is. It it in my head, I was thinking it was an actual lane next to the actual drive-through lane. But in the definition is as written here, it extends to basically just any place that's you can get out from the from the business. It could be a parking lot. It's, am I understanding this correctly?
Yeah.
So I always had the Chick-fil-A example in my head. There's no place to go around the 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 drive-through lanes, but there is a parking lot where you can get out of the area just after you leave the drive-through lane. So the definition of bypass being further clarified is what eased my mind and I was okay with how this came through. That's my thought. Anyone else at the moment? All right, so we're back to motion to advance to second reading as amended.
Your Honor, I make a motion to add a condition onto that section B that would be uh for new construction, drive-through facilities shall provide a bypass lane adjacent to the drive-through lanes. So vehicles may bypass the drive-through lanes.
But don't they have to do that anyway with the ordinance?
That's the one that was removed by the Plan Commission, except I added on new construction to the beginning of it.
But, all right, so there's a motion to amend. We need a second. Okay, that motion fails for lack of a second. Um, all right, so we're back to the motion as amended. There's nothing further, roll call, please. Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
All right, six ayes, no nays, motion to advance as amended to second reading carries. Thank you. Item number nineteen point three and ordinance amending chapter eight, building buildings and other construction and building services of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing article seven miscellaneous, division two, rental housing inspection program in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof one new article seven miscellaneous, division two, rental housing inspection program dealing with the same subject matter. Motion to advance the second reading. Second. All right, motion by Finch and Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and motion to advance to second reading carries. And that is all I have this evening. All right, thank you. Under miscellaneous business, um, the schedule has been quite busy. Uh, my office, um, uh, lots of board meetings, um, events to attend. I've got Ms. Finch as pro tem kicking off a couple of events this weekend downtown, the pickleball tournament and taming of the slough?
Yes.
Yes, taming of the slough. Um, wonderful partnerships with organizations downtown and then also NAMI walks. I'll be kicking that off this. No, yeah, that's this weekend.
Saturday.
Calendar is a little crazy. Um, I participated in the Quet City Health Initiative. Um, I'm on that as a representative of our bi-state commission. Um, they had a board meeting today on strategic planning. So it's a very interesting organization. If you're not familiar with it, I encourage you to get online and read about it. They are looking at um um how they can transform a little bit. They've been around for twenty-five years. But what I find most valuable um at that is the information our public um our county health departments provide because they are members um there. And of course, they had um some updated information about um COVID and the uh new booster that's coming out and um some of the changes with that. It's very interesting in terms of its commercialization um and how many doses they're really going to have around. So when it comes to our role uh uh in regard to health and welfare of our community, um, I'll be paying close attention to what the access is there. Um, it's a little bit of, you know, there are some programs to to help those that uh meet certain income guidelines to get the get the vaccine, but um we're we're back to um those that have the means will get the care, um, was a little bit how it was described. Um, and so they have, as as was noted in a news story about um our water treatment plant monitoring for viruses, including RSV um and the flu, you know, that that's different than what's going on in Scott County. Um, but it COVID start, we start to see a resurgence two weeks after they see it in the wastewater. So lo and behold, I have a lovely graph I can show you. We should be seeing a nice resurgence pretty soon. So just a word to be careful and cautious. And then, of course, I know an issue that's on our minds um with our residents is the um the sewer project that uh went wrong. Um, and we're trying to get answers for our residents and what have you. And I've double-checked with staff multiple times on um and they've been great about getting together a communication plan and trying to execute that through our risk management office. And so I I offer these four thoughts um for the public and for you all. Um, of course, uh, Margaret will guide us on any um of the content uh related to this, um, but this conversation. But number one, the contractor's insurer has not yet made a determination on liability and wants this metallurgy testing, which I believe we've talked about previously. Um, number two, the city has hired its own metallurgist to test alongside the contractor's insurers metallurgists. The city immediately paid the initial cleanup costs for the affected residents. I think you all knew that as well. Um, and the city has remained in close contact with the affected residents and has asked each to gather bids for reconstruction and other costs to expedite their claims once the contractor's insurer makes a liability determination. So it's very clear to me from this these updates that um there is a legal process to go through. Um, and it is extremely unfortunate that it's taking this long to help our residents, but I was pleased to know um the level of service that is is trying to be had here to get to a resolution. Um, so that's the update. And and you can touch on that as we go around if you want to, but um that's what I have for miscellaneous this evening. Mr. Macias? Oh, sorry, I missed you. Ms. Murphy, do you have anything?
No, no.
Macias, you don't have it? Ms. Finch?
Um, Sunday, seventeenth, uh, in the old Belgian village, Stevens Park, um, is the annual Belgian fest. Uh, roly-woy starts at eleven, drinking Belgian beer starts at twelve. So all are welcome.
You can do the welcome there because I just got asked to do that welcome, but I'm usually still at church, so I will refer them to you. Um, and also don't forget the porch party. They're working in conjunction at the Butterworth Center.
Mm-hmm.
They're working in conjunction with the Belgian fest, so it's happening around the same time. Mr. O'Brien?
I'm gonna have to go to that, I guess. I was not aware that that was this weekend. Thank you, Alderperson Finch. No, I don't have any.
Thank you. Ms. Castro?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just adding on uh related to the sewer backup contractor problem that we face. Um, I think that it's it's a pro a program I've been following pretty closely and has given me a lot of pause um of how we evaluate what contractors we want to work with in this city. And and it's easy to think of that as business interests, but uh I think this shows that truthfully, it it becomes a resident problem when we are not careful about who we're working with and how we are selecting and ensuring we have the right contractors. It's just something I've been thinking a lot on and I think just an important thing to remind ourselves of.
Thank you. Mr. Dykheisen?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other staff? All right, we will uh, is there any other public comment, Chief? Nope, so we move to executive session.
Your Honor, I make the motion that council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiating matters dash five ILCS one twenty four dash two C two, pending probable or imminent litigation dash five ILCS one twenty four dash two C eleven.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Alderman Schmidt. Roll call, please. Alderperson Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye, and I think he did an excellent job.
Macias? Nice point, Debbie. Macias?